All right, we are a little after six o'clock, so let's go ahead and get this meeting started. So a political order, I believe Deb that Tessa is out today.
I believe so.
Moving on, we will all rise please for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I would expect that all of the board members would have a chance to look at the agenda. At this point in time, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, moving on. I'll go over the consent agenda, item by item, and then after I read all those items, I'll see if there are any that we want to remove from the consent agenda and then we'll move forward as necessary. So one point two communications, one point two, or excuse me, one, five point one communications, five point two approval of the January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen regular, and Jan- January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen special meeting minutes, the February sixth, two thousand and seventeen work session minutes. Five point three approval of treasurer's report, bank reconciliation, and general funds, general fund spending report, my goodness. Five point four approval of general fund checks, construction fund and wires. Five point five approved donations. Five point six approval of open enrollment agreements. Five point seven approved contracts and letter of assignments. Five point eight approved retirement of Sue Braun and Pam Twight. And five point nine approved termination of Halli Galdas. So at this point in time, are there any agenda items in the consent agenda that any board member members would like to remove for discussion?
I don't want to remove anything, but I want to thank Sue Braun and Pam Twight and Diane Galdas for their years of service.
Thank you very much, I would say the same. Are there removal or discussion items or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. And so?
Seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, moving on, I believe we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Mr. Elsada, do we have a community and staff presentation tonight?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we do not have a community and staff presentation tonight. In consultation with Board Chair Harris, we decided to shorten this meeting, knowing that all of you will be spending an inordinate amount of time in this room over the next month, your selection of the next superintendent of the school district. So there are no community and staff presentations now, there will be one however at the March twenty seventh meeting. And then there will be others coming through on March sixth at the board work session.
And the students can yell out, woo-hoo, it's gonna be shortened. Right.
Personalizing, Larry.
You think?
I would say the last one, they got their money.
All right, seven point two, Mr. Wellman, your high school principals' report.
All the principals have submitted their reports. In order to support time and frames and things like that, we've decided to decline on saying that I think. I would like to say, as I was saying, to thank you to Sue and Pam for their years of service. They are wonderful staff members, wonderful teachers, and have impacted the lives of Byron students for a... I won't say a lo- I will say a long time, but I don't mean to be mean or anything, but they are, they've been wonderful. So I want to thank them for their years of service as well.
I had Sue as a teacher, she's been a great teacher a long time.
I will say that, yes.
So I have a question, Mrs. Twight is the speech teacher, so she'll be finishing out the year obviously. Do you know if she plans on continuing to do speech yet for her time, or we don't know?
We don't know.
So we could maybe do a little talking to her this afternoon?
Conversations can be had.
Any questions on any of the administration reports?
I was just gonna tell this woman, Snowdance Day, I had my husband on a date night out at Chester's. So we went back into a room, and there was a arrogant, giant table of students dressed up. And of course I looked, and I'm like, oh, guess where they're from, so you know, I just kind of sat there. Unbelievable, I mean, the behavior, the mannerisms, it was so many talking about well-rounded and care for students. It was just kind of hard not to sit there.
They're our kids.
Yeah, exactly.
We have great kids, family and staff, there's no doubt about it.
You had to behave yourself, Jack.
Yes, I did, that's what my husband reminded me, he goes, dear.
Was, hey, were you in on interviews today, kind of, when you went out?
I was just gonna make a comment on that, actually. One of the reasons why Mr. Wellman and Mr. Rodermer are here and we're absent some of our other administrators tonight is, today was the day where our administrative, part of our administrative team went to Winona State and interviewed potential student interns that will be part of our Winona State University teacher prep pilot program. Say that a few names fast. Within that, though, I just received an email from Ms. Durnan indicating that we have solidified five candidates and perhaps a sixth in a number of different areas, including special education, a high school and middle school science licensed person. In addition to, I know there's one K called PE as well as a couple of elementary folks. So very successful today, and interestingly enough, we had a number of student interns that had an interest in this. And remember, we're locking them in for a year. So they do their typical student teaching experience first semester, but second semester they'll be subbing in our district in addition to getting some tutelage from our talented Byron staff members, as well as some mentorship from different educators. So it's really been, and I would actually applaud the BEA on this too, for their cooperation and forward with this program because they see the same need we do in teacher shortage and kind of that crisis that's there to support getting quality educators into the Byron School District, so.
So, Mr. Elsada, you still have reports as well?
I do have reports, yeah. Okay, so I apologize, actually, because this report would have come really late. And it just, within the scope of things, didn't quite get done, so I do apologize for that. But in the essence of this, you'll see the important dates we have coming up. As I mentioned before, March sixth, we'll have our board work session. I need to make sure I just clarify, is that a 5:00 PM start? Deb, I'll confirm that with you.
For which date?
For the March sixth board work session.
I think that is 5:30.
5:30 PM, 5:30, thank you, Chris. So just make sure we confirm that that'll be a 5:30 to 7:30 timeframe, thereabouts. The special board meeting on March sixteenth, you'll have to decide with Mr. Dragseth and Mr. Elsada about when you want to hold that meeting to select finalists candidates on the sixteenth. I didn't indicate the Saturday, March eighteenth, that you would be then having another special board meeting to select finalists based off your work on this.
We'll determine that time on the sixteenth, it depends on how many there are. But Deb, I will contact Ken and Bob to see about the sixteenth.
And then, of course, Monday, March twentieth through Wednesday, the March twenty-two will be the finalist interviews. And of course, you're leaving two, possibly three dates open for that. So the next time, we would pull together, as this is a board review, March twenty-seventh for our regular board meeting. And I believe the timeline set forward was if there is a candidate that you bring forward, that is when you'd like to look to approve a candidate.
Deb, did we announce the twenty-seventh being a different date in the appropriate areas?
I have the sixteenth as a 5:00 PM meeting, the sixth is a Friday.
Yep. Okay.
One piece I wanted to pull back in for you is actually the second bullet under district updates, just to give you a little update as to where we're at with the middle school HVAC and fire suppression project. We are putting out an equipment bid package this week. We met last week with our architect and construction managers and engineers. So that bid package will go out the third of March, I believe, is a Friday. And we will have to do a bid opening on that day, and according to law, we need to have one school board member present for the bid opening. What I've been told is that there'll be very few bids to open because there's only a couple of vendors that need the kind of equipment we're looking for. So Jennifer, I don't know, Jennifer's gonna help facilitate that process in the third, is that?
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM.
What time we'll be opening the bids, so we need, if one of you guys is willing to look around.
Pick somebody, we're good.
Peggy?
Well, if I could just pause for a second, because Harvey's on the finance and facilities committee, would it make sense for Harvey to be there just because, okay? Is that a fact?
That's fine with me, yep.
Would you available, Harvey?
Yep.
Okay. I'll send you an invite.
Okay, I'll just go to the other bullets then. At our meeting on March sixth, I will be presenting kind of the study that you saw from Hazel Reinhardt a few weeks ago, coupled with a building facility capacity study that Regal Youngquist is preparing for us. And really, we'll share with you a ten-year facility recommendation. And one piece I'm gonna add to that, just in preparation and to get you thinking about it, is that when Hazel Reinhardt left us that evening, she left us kind of with the impression that we were to use the high kindergarten, high migration, if you recall the question I asked her. The other, there are two other levels, because I'm using that as a baseline, and I confirmed this with Hazel last week. We are going to, what happens if we get fifty percent? So the number of growth that she showed per year, what happens if we were to take fifty percent more each year? That would be scenario two, and scenario three would be what happened if we doubled the number of students that were coming? So we go from a projection of about twenty-five hundred in the next ten years, and what if we were to not bring it to five thousand? Well, what would happen if we took the five hundred students and all of a sudden that became a thousand students? So those are the three scenarios that I'll be laying out for you, and what a facility recommendation and proposed timeline would be for all of those recommendations, so.
Have we had a, has anyone had a chance to talk to the city? I know they were here, and I know they also looked at that study. And I did talk to Dan Messenberg one evening, a little bit about the meeting and the information. And I didn't really ask him a lot of questions about what they thought of that and what impact they thought that would have on our city, but more importantly, on how they could change what that impact is by making decisions in the city. So I think it might be a good idea for someone, and it can be the city council rep or someone, to ask those questions to them. So we have an idea of what their direction is, because they have, they're more of a driver to that than we are.
I did have a brief conversation with Mary Blair Heft, and she indicated to me that the city was going to continue in the pro-growth sort of mantra as far as growing. They didn't feel a necessity right now to pull back in any sort of plat.
They're in pro-growth right now.
Or they're in pro-growth, and actually Hazel confirmed that.
Well, I would say the city is going through pro-growth, but I don't know that the city is directing pro-growth, I guess is my...
Well, and they have done plat approval, I mean, they've approved every plat that's come forward. They may have added a few pieces here and there to it, but every plat has been approved. So I think, again, just going back to the ten-year recommendation, we'll lay out three possible scenarios for the board to consider. Now, you're not approving one of them.
Right.
You're just using that as a tool to navigate what will the next pieces be for our school districts? So does it mean that we're going to add on to the high school and middle school? Does it mean that we need to be out looking for additional parcels of land for a possible new building in the ten to twelve years?
And then one other question, and that is, it's my understanding that the governor is starting to back off on his pre-K program, meaning monitoring the state, so that's gonna have an effect as well?
Yeah, in fact, I spent today with, I'm sorry.
Right, no, no, I just wasn't...
Yeah, so today we had our CD at the Capitol, and I spent today with Board Member Schmidt, Board Member Berg. And really, there was no rhetoric from any of the legislators about the universal pre-K. And Governor Dayton, as you mentioned, has really pulled back on that, knowing that it's probably not with a Republican-controlled senate and house. It's probably not gonna gain any legs in either one of the bodies. So he's pulled back, but within his recommendation of a budget, he's still earmarking, I think, forty million dollars for the purposes of voluntary pre-K, and districts can access that through the grant and then also the Pathways Scholarship program.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, lastly, the goal and action plan in the last meeting, we had talked about my personal, I've actually decided to postpone that until our April work session, just to honor the work that the board is doing in their selection process, so. Are there any other questions or comments? And I guess, if I could add one other piece that I didn't add to this, which was our visit with the Capitol today. We were able to visit with Senator Senjum, and we were able to see Senator Carla Nelson, Representative Nels Pearson, and Representative Kwong today, and then we also visited with another legislator, that was what the community, we were with, we were with Asa Kukato today. But we heard a strong, strong support for a few items, one of them is debt service equalization. The Byron School District is a clear winner on debt service equalization because we have low property wealth here. And for the students, it doesn't mean that we've got poor houses in Byron. What it means is that we don't have a lot of big industry here that supports a big tax base. So all of the tax, all of our schools are upon the residence. We don't have any businesses that support debt, big business. So in saying that, they're all in support of a debt service equalization bill, which I think is going in the House and the Senate. I think there are varying amounts that are with that, I heard eighty million at one point, and then I heard that the House file may be a little less than that. But it's got legs and it's gonna make it.
Are they still talking three and three?
Oh, no. We're talking, our message was if the governor came out right of the blocks with his target of two and two on the formula.
Oh, so we are hoping for three and two.
Now, Senator Senjum said today that he believes that the Senate caucus is starting to hedge upward because, in his own words, they like to beat the governor.
Go for it.
We also talked about, there's another piece added that I think they've got forty million dollars tied, or the governor has forty million dollars tied in with special education cross subsidies. And our proposal to the legislators today was put that money instead of out there for cross subsidization, put that out there for the districts, put it into the formula so districts can decide. Because if we're gonna cross subsidize, here it's prob- we're not winners on that. Maybe bigger districts are, but we just wouldn't necessarily be a winner on that. And I think Cass Manero, who was also with us today, indicated the same. We also talked about TRA, because there's a projected right now, and Governor Dayton came out with two percent over four years, so a half a percent employer responsibility. We asked, again, with our legislators today, that they put that away from the K-12 omnibus bill, because it's not money that goes to students. And so we asked that that be put into some sort of pension bill. So, and that service equalization is staying in the tax committee, and everyone was committed to that, saying that staying in taxes, and it's not gonna come to as part of a K-12 spending bill.
Does TRA affect higher ed as well?
No, no, they're in ERA, but they're not part of the Teachers Retirement Association. Unless they taught K-12 before they went to, yeah, post-secondary.
So I'm curious if they're maybe gonna change ERA.
I haven't heard anything about that, to be honest with you.
I don't think they're in as big, as much trouble as ERA is.
Well, part of the reason TRA has been in trouble in the past is that we allowed some larger districts to come in that were in big-time deficit spending with their benefit. And so TRA had to make that up. And over the course of time, we've depleted the coffers, so to speak, in TRA to a point where we're not able to pay unless we start raising the rates for both the employee and the employer. And neither one of them is very attractive to anyone.
That's pretty much a process.
Right.
We've got the letter.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, regular state employees, corrections, state control, they're all getting the same thing.
Okay, all right, it'll be as long as it's...
Everybody's a little bit different depending on...
They're just not picking on the school system.
Nope.
And I'll just add, Chris, Harvey, do you have anything else to add to we, did I miss anything?
Steve was with us today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Steve Wellman was with us today too, so.
And I spoke with the other side of the aisle as well.
Yeah.
Representative Elseware, Palowski from Winona, he said two and two is bare bones for that. And he's hoping that it goes up from that.
And actually, a bill that Representative Palowski is carrying is the Ag to School piece, and we will see that that will fly in both House and Senate, and it's got bipartisan support. In fact, they've got twenty-seven authors that signed on it, you can have a total of thirty-three authors. So it's got widespread support. Remember, that bill was on the governor's desk last spring and wasn't signed because there had a transportation piece linked to it.
I was gonna say, it's one of the things I'm linking into.
Right, that's the danger.
Right, exactly.
What else is gonna be tied together with those other pieces that will be less attractive?
But on the minimum, it's a forty percent reduction on all bonds for our ag landowners, which will be a huge tax savings and property tax relief for the farmers that support the buildings in this district.
And it'll make it a little bit easier when we do get to the point to where growth is gonna demand we spend more money on buildings, so.
It's a lot easier when you've got a plane. So that concludes my report, unless there are any questions?
Well, I know Faith might have an update on ZED, but I thought you had worked with the ZED directors, so do you have an update on the Edeljob?
I will, and then Faith, feel free to claim it.
Maybe we'll just hang.
Okay.
I'm just hanging because, my kudos to Jeff, because he was asked after my first meeting that things just kind of blew up, asked to basically steer the meeting with the superintendents, you know, getting going. So great progress, and if you want to elaborate on kind of what you guys came up with?
Well, no, Faith asked me to kind of hold a joint meeting of both the superintendents and the governing board together because there was a lot of tension, a lot of unanswered questions, and so we were able to pull together. There is one sort of piece that I think was the quote-unquote linchpin with this, is that we were able to offer this building in a three-year lease, to set, to continue using it for the ALC and transition success program, because our facility plan seems to be on target. Our buildings will fill in the next three years, or they're getting closer to being full, but we're not having to access this facility. And Governor Dayton kind of pulling away the piece with universal pre-K. So knowing that we have this facility available, so that was one of, so we will be entering a three-year lease agreement, we said, for this property, or to use the classroom, this one that they're using. With that, though, we also asked for ZED governing board to consider using up to eighty thousand dollars to kind of rehabilitate the areas that we have in here that require attention. Like we've got painting that needs to be done, we've got a video surveillance system that is not working. We've got some other security measures that need to take place, in addition to just general maintenance of the wear and tear on the building.
We actually, they have, you know, they not put a dollar mark on it.
Okay.
Because they're actually going into the architects that have been using dual walkthrough here. And they didn't want to cap it at anything, depending what the recommendations were going full. One concern was, I think, like security system, they pay the whole thing, and if it's left, you know, it really improves the value of our property. I said, you gotta segregate those items and come back and talk to us as a district. If it's something that's improving our building that we will be able to use on a roll forward, I can see that we can negotiate that when it comes to pictures and technology and putting a wall up and things like that, you know, that's definitely helping their flow. So I said, don't just take it off the table, you know, please present what, right, you know, so.
The other thing that I would mention is security system, right? I mean, we have ours out here, we don't need one on the other side of the building that they do, or could possibly. And I don't know if that's what the security is you're talking about. So yes, it stays with our building, but it's not really in an area where we would utilize it like we would if it was out front. So yes, I agree with you to a certain extent, but we would never necess- we wouldn't necessarily put it there ourselves.
But depending, you know, what the students may be, they will be injury, since they will not be here during normal...
But it was, it was very bad that this is a short-term solution. This will not be the long-term solution, because as we grow, this building will have to be utilized past the three years, and there are communal promises maybe after that point. And so, again, we did, we are leaving a clause of separability within that because if something were to happen, and we need to utilize this facility for our own K-12 programming, we have to have that ability as well, and I think that's always, there's always been a separability clause within the agreements, was said. So that was one piece. The other major piece within that was, there was a land purchase piece in there, and I think they're still working through the fine details of that. But there was a strong sentiment among a number of the superintendents that waiting until a new executive director was brought on board to really make the securing of that land may be the most appropriate. I don't know that the land is gonna be sold in the next ten minutes, so I think it's okay for the governing board to pull back, which I think is a wise move for the organization. And I think there's gotta be some strategic planning done within the organization to really drive the decision-making tools of ZED. And then the last piece was, when ZED was first formed, there was an executive director who, for many of you that may not know, was Dr. Shannon, was the executive director. And then there was Carol Anhold at the time, was a special education director that served under Dr. Shannon, but took care of all of the directorship needs with special ed. Seventeen years ago, they tried to post for a position and it wasn't filled. And so, as that governing board seventeen years ago made the decision to combine that position into one. I shared, as a former director myself, that that's an unreasonable position to ask anyone to do because ZED has combined about ten thousand students. And if we are serving fourteen percent, which is a pretty logical percentage, fourteen hundred students are on IEDs. And to think that we have one person trying to navigate alternative ed, special ed, other GMP programming, other sort of enrichments that ZED offers, it's too much for one person's student. And so the ZED governing board took the recommendation that we are going to hire an executive director, and then that person will be hiring a director of special education just to oversee the special education department of the entire seven districts. So I think that's a big piece of leadership that's, I have to say, Carol, because that's a difficult position she's in attracting all of them. So, and I also applaud Faith for bringing this forward, and the governing board for really pulling together some resolution to this so that we can move forward, because we begin an executive director, having things are untended, it's hard to find that position. So this will help, I think, bring in a different candidate pool that maybe was a little more reluctant to report.
So do you feel like the search that you're starting now, or you guys started, is for that executive director? Or do you think you're kind of starting off having a research?
We, actually, after a meeting, we called them, I kind of reposted, per se. I'm gonna do another four-week window since we changed our job description, which is, we had four special ed coordinators, but actually fill out the application, so this will open up a pool a little bit more in our...
And they could still go for the special ed.
Yep, they can, yep, and our big comment was, I'm just, please make sure that they know that they should keep their application in the pool for that position. We did have a discussion about the timing gap for having certification on that, because depending on the time Carol's done to the thirtieth, getting that position, Carol did say that we would be able to negotiate, you know, yeah, forty-five, sixty days, just make sure we have what it is. Because otherwise, we're done. And she would, she, she suggested she would do that, and she knows totally that it's only until the new director will come in, because otherwise, if we don't have one more, you know, and that's right, so.
Anything else on ZED? Faith?
All right, so moving on, seven point one zero, approved achievement and integration budget.
Checking on that. So, Danita's not here tonight, and I'll answer any questions in her stead if you have them. But basically, what we're asking for is just approval of the budget for the achievement integration grant that we get. Remember, we collaborate with the Rochester Public Schools for this. Danita has laid out some goals and objectives here for the various pieces we're looking to attend to. And then I think the budget is attached here.
Actually, I don't think this is really approving the budget, I think this is approving the plan. I know it says budget, but I know what the budget looks like, and this is not it.
If I stand corrected, I would have thought we were approving it.
Is there another document?
Yep, you are actually being asked to approve the plan and the budget worksheet, that's part of your plan. So you're approving the plan, but there is a budget worksheet that goes with it. So I don't believe it is, I've got the copy right here. So what you're being asked to approve, and I'd be glad to share this with you before it's signed tonight, is a total... Um, so, um, what you're being asked to approve, and I'd be glad to share this with you before it's signed tonight, is the total revenue that we're receiving from, uh, the ANI grant is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, we received forty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars in just initial revenue, and then we also have an incentive that was added to that, um, in regards to our equity coach position of twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. So, I'll pass it around if you want.
I don't think anybody either, they know about the equity coach?
Um, you may not. We talked about this at the finance meeting, and we can certainly, I don't know, if we wanna do a quick finance update. Those are the few, and members of the finance committee, feel free to chime in here. We did talk, um, as far as the ANI grant, um, we're looking at hiring an equity coach, which would assist us with, um, it's part of the incentive we get with the grant itself. Um, part of the work in that job description will be coming to you for your approval, uh, at the, um, March twenty-seventh meeting. Um, 'cause we have not posted that position yet, but we are looking for someone that can bring, um, experiences of working with, um, diverse cultures, that will help us with the eventual demographic changes that we may experience.
We will.
Yeah, it's definitely a proactive, like Danita was talking about, that start, the conversations with staff and getting there before it's, you know, well, after the fact.
We can start making some changes while it's relatively unimpactful on our, on our population right now, so we're ready. And the job description is, uh, Danita's dream, I think. It was pretty detailed and. ELL.
Yeah.
Do we have, right now this year, do we have ELL at the high school? Then full-time and part-time job?
That's all the way through the district.
And, and full-time for the district, right?
No, point five.
No, it's five. Point five's not.
So, that.
We have less than, we have like fourteen students, so.
That person, Harvey, works directly with students where this coach would work with staff, and really infuse best practice strategies, uh, in their, in the classroom, recognizing that our population most likely will continue to change and evolve.
It's really spreading that person's fingers out to more student confirmation.
Right. Just to paraphrase a couple of things from the draft job description I just pulled out here, um, really working develops cultural competence with staff as well as working with English language learners, uh, providing some staff development in regards to equitable practices, um, working together with PLCs in our current, uh, setup to, to do some of that work. Uh, but also really providing one-to-one sort of coaching for, uh, teachers. Uh, this person would also be working actually with our, um, after-school agreements program, uh, to provide student contact and, and teaching and, um, guidance in that way too.
And that person was, was gonna be based at the, um, P two building, right?
Uh, well, it'll be district-wide, but that could be where they base their application also.
I just think that's a great piece, when, you know, we have a district a little bit to our east that is struggling with that now, and the disciplinary side and that, you know, acknowledging and, I think it's throwing great timing, right, for this district, rather be proactive than reactive.
And Steph, we don't know what was gonna be used, part, part.
We've got a couple of, uh, this will pay for about half of the person. So, our other options, which, well, I mean, I think the plan is that we'll decide internally how we're gonna pay for the other half, but one option is staff development. Um, another option is we've got some title monies that we could, would also qualify to pay the other half of this salary. So, we'll, we'll just, we're gonna have to decide what, I mean, what's the best fit for paying for the other half.
Was that gonna be in the teacher contract or?
Uh, because we're requiring a teaching license, they have, we have to have agreement with the EA that will be a teacher on special assignment position. We actually can go away from the contract, but we do need to offer them, uh, the option to get a fair share.
Any questions or comments?
But that, but please see, that's gonna be a four-year.
No, this, that, that one is only for a three-year because it's only the length of the grant. And then beyond that point, we'll, we have to get it approved if that's something we choose to report. The position I think you're quoting is that we just posted the instructional coach positions, one was a three-year, one was a four-year, and those were just recently posted. And those are really internal-only positions for our.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the plan as well as the budget.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Moving on, seven point one one, consider policy revisions for policy five oh six, student discipline, five two zero, student surveys, five two nine, staff notification of violent behavior by students, uh, seven oh seven, transportation of public students. Jeff, do you have any comment?
I don't have any comments on any of these. A lot of these are just annual policy reviews for the board. Um, you can see in the versions that you were delivered that they've maybe changed an and to an or, things like that, just really, um, miniscule changes to any of, nothing substantial in the policy, I would add. Um, and so at this point, um, I would just ask for you to consider approving those policy revisions as, as, as guidance from MSBA.
Um, with the transportation on, we still will be building later, um, in May or June above the bus stops and that kind of stuff.
The only thing that normally the school board votes on is the, um, the, the barriers to, the boundaries, things, or the safe.
Safe routes.
The safe, you know, that we can't cross County Road five or County Road seven. That's usually the only thing.
Yeah, stay within the state's requirements.
Right, but otherwise, generally the board.
They had a change in the transportation.
It's just the boundaries that you're referring to in that, yeah.
The boundaries and then, uh, give you, I mean, the total, and then with the, uh, changing from preschool to, to secondary building.
Oh, yep. Yep.
The third, fifth grade building is one location type of deal.
Right, so I'm just, I just wanna make sure that I call it out, 'cause I, I wanna make sure we, so, in this one eligibility, we changed it, remember? This was in rec, you know, of our last alignment. We now have K five students reside more than point three miles from the elementary campus. Um, and all residents, sixth grade students reside more than one point two five, so it's just approving what we basically talked about and approved before, but this is an annual policy review. So, that was what, and we had already approved that last summer, I think, yeah.
Only else I would say would be that, uh, since I see Brooke back there, you might wanna have the teachers look at five oh six, the student, uh, displacement one. Has that changed?
Student discipline?
Discipline.
Discipline. We've talked about taking kids out of the classroom.
I'm just trying to pull it up right now. Was there something, Harvey, that you wanna?
No, 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 no.
Just, just in general, but.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, it.
So, just be aware of the changes, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Gotcha, right.
And this one, five oh six is one we review a lot, and this actually gets a lot of changes, if there's any legislative changes that need to take place. And I'm just panning through here to see if there's anything substantial that would've been read in. Or added. A few days ago, so, right here.
Yeah, it's just below that, where there's a paragraph that's been added, there.
Okay, so it states a student must be removed from class immediately if the student engages in assault or violent behavior. They define assault as an act done with the intent to cause fear, another, uh, immediate bodily harm or death, or the intentional infliction of or attempt to inflict bodily harm upon another. The removal from class shall be for a period of time deemed appropriate by the principal and consultation with the teacher.
All right, so it looks like we have one, two, three, four, um, policy revisions. So, unless anyone would like to remove one of those, I would ask for, uh, the approval of those revisions as noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies and invite.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, I do have a update from School Exec Connect. Uh, the first update I wanna mention to the, to the board members is the work session on March sixth. You do have to have the interview questions that you would like to use from the list of questions they gave us. Um, if you'd like to, if you already have those decided and you wanna send them to me early, that's fine. If you wanna bring them that night, that's fine too. Um, and then, um, yes.
Now, you, are asking for, are fourteen questions or?
Yes, I believe we are all supposed to pick two. Yep.
But I mean, you wanna, we have forty-five questions. You want fourteen that we think that we should be asking, or just two?
I think, I think he, I think they said, I think he said, and we can discuss this, but I thought he said each board member will have two to, to ask.
Right, I thought we were just rotating through them, but we were gonna pick our fourteen and then.
Right, right now, so.
I'll send, I'll send you fourteen that I think should be asked, and then at the end, then we can decide who's gonna ask or what.
And we can decide if we all decide on the same fourteen, yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right, and then on the fifteenth, um, they did let me know that at that point in time, they did have twenty-six applications that had been started. Twenty had been completed, six were partially completed, and they, um, threw out the number of approximately ten additional they thought would be coming in, um, before the end of the, uh, candidate pool is closed, or the candidate application process is closed.
So, they're making thirteen completed apps?
That's what it's looking like. We're probably gonna have over thirteen. Right now, there's twenty-six. And they're expecting up to ten more. So, I think we'll probably, likely have over.
You will see a rash come in between March fifth and March eighth.
Um, he said that they have good interest in the position, lots of phone calls, uh, people are deeming this a very desirable. Um, and, uh, this, the pool names that are coming in so far have some very solid looking individuals.
I think there's multiple states represented in the candidate pool this far.
So, just wanted to give you all an update. Um, so I think we're probably, certainly will look at the county candidates on, what was it, the sixteenth to interview on the eighteenth, but I would expect we're probably gonna get a healthy number and might, might just have it down to three as opposed to two, um, for the twenty, twenty-first and twenty-second. And Chris and I have been working a little bit with Summerby, um, in setting up dinners to have there. And so, we will be having the board, um, as well as the, the two individuals from School Exec Connect, Bob and Ken, as well as the candidates and their spouses or partners, um, should they choose, so choose to have them be here for that. So, at this point in time, we're starting to get, move on all of those types of things. Any questions on where we're at with any of that? Any other miscellaneous anyone would like to mention?
I went to the city council the other day, and, um, there, I'm sure you saw in the paper that they're redoing three different streets in Byron. And it's gonna be Third Avenue and First Avenue, and they're with a sidewalk on one side, so that's gonna be safety for our children to be walking instead of in the street, um, walking down, um, sidewalks. But they don't know what side, if it's gonna be the east side or the west side. It was amazing to me that meeting, because that was the first meeting they had for talking about, uh, payments, schedule for the landowners. And there was a good thirty-five, forty people there, and I'm going, we can't get ten or five, we're trying to pass a bond referendum. So, I don't know if we're doing something wrong or if we're.
We're doing something right.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that was nice. I mean, it was nice to see that many people, you know, voicing their concerns on the project. There are, most of them are, and very much in favor, but they were just wanting to check, you know, the price tag for their property. And then, and the other thing I have is that on March sixth, with that work session, can we have a meeting for negotiations with the, um, the, um, superintendents? So, you can get information from the rest of the board, have a call session.
Um, for negotiations for the new superintendent contract?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that we'll be at the point where we're gonna start negotiating that yet on the sixth.
Just, you have to have, it has to be an open meeting, I mean, to negotiate anything, it should be a close meeting, but before, or.
Right.
You can take it from there, once you get our, um, strategy or our information that we would like to see in the contract.
Right, and what I'm saying is, on, in the March session, we won't know who the candidate is, so we're not gonna have an idea of what our strategy is going to be.
But aren't you gonna look at the contract to see what should be in the contract and what should not be in the contract?
I think we've all looked at what's going to be in the contract, or what's, what's in the MSBA contract.
But there's changes that maybe we want, maybe what they're talking about are changed.
Over the standard verbiage from MSBA?
Yeah, 'cause that information that gave you that, they, there's different things that they had proposed should be in the contract and not, um, with it. And just, uh, 'cause if we don't do it with the sixth one, I can't be able to do it.
Right, right, I understand. Um, let me took, take a look at our calendar, and I'll let you know on that. I'll, I'll send out a note to the inferior board on how we're gonna move forward with that. I don't know that the sixth is a problem. We'll look and see what's on the agenda, and maybe it's gonna have to be a different meeting date and time.
One thing that will have to be a little addendum to the sixth will be is there will have to be, um, a, a, a special board meeting for that day because you'll be approving the bid package for the equipment down on the sixth as well, so that would be an open meeting there. And to hear what Mr. Burghad says, I mean, would, you could close the meeting at that point and then go into a work session, or you could start with the work session and do those things.
Right, I need the closed session at the end. Because it's a work session.
We would have to clo- we would have to close that.
We would have to close that, but at a work session, we can't vote.
That's why we would have to close it and have a special.
We start a work session, we call it the work session, adjourn that, and then you start a special board meeting, and you could keep that open for the approval of the bids. And then you could close it, and just, it has to be taped.
Okay, sounds like we have the meetings of a plan, but we'll take a look at the work session agenda to see how long that is. 'Cause I hate to add another hour and a half to a negotiation meeting. I, I have no idea how long that would go, so.
I do have one other, if I can, one of the miscellaneous. I'd like to read a resolution, if I may. Whereas the Byron Public Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Byron Public Schools repre- appreciates the vital role played by the, those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as the voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interest to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates of public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and to the public's expectations to the school district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Byron Public Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Byron School Board by proclaiming February twentieth through twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, as school board recognition. I'd like everyone to applaud for our board for the. I have a little certificate for all of you.
I think you should talk like that all the time. Whereas. And whereas.
We'll keep it very, uh, very formal.
I, I, I think that approach is, approachableness would go away just a little bit.
Any other miscellaneous business comments, questions? Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, you guys can come on up, and we'll sign your.